I'll open up this meeting for the planning board for the town of Maynard. The today's date is March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and the time is seven oh two P M. This meeting will be fully virtual as advertised online. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. And I will first take roll call so that I can understand that members are able to participate. Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Annette? Annette, I need you to unmute.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Natalie?
Yeah.
And Jim?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to our first item. This is item two point one on the agenda. I will open up the. Just give me one sec. So Bill Crenshaw. For the special permit renewal request, is this a hearing? Right?
Uh, pretty sure it is, yeah.
Yeah, okay, cuz it's usually I see the word hearing in the um. On the agenda, but I'll open up the hearing for the special permanent renewal from Green Star. DB rise from twenty-two to twenty-four Main Street. Who do we have here tonight from Green Star? Phil? Is it? Okay, could you please introduce yourself and introduce your team, whoever else is here?
Sure. My name is Phil Silverman from Vicente LLP and Veronica Apadaka is here from the company.
Thank you. Just for some background, I believe it was. More than two years ago when the initial permit was issued. And this is a renewal request which which was stated in the original permit itself. So our job tonight, the planning board, is just to ensure that the. That the permit has been in operable. Relative to its compliance with section seven point nine, nine point four point six and ten point four. And we I also take this an opportunity just to see how things are going. And how how the permits, the criteria has been conditions I've been working for 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 you guys, Phil. So is there is there a presentation or is there anything you would like to provide for us?
Really, you know, I would just say that, you know, things have been going well. The company is very pleased with its operation and the. Cooperation it's received from the town. If Veronica, she may be able to give you just a quick, you know, summary of operations, if that's okay. Veronica, you wanna go ahead? We don't seem to. Veronica, can you? Huh? Okay, it doesn't seem like we're able to hear her.
Well, I I did see that she was on mute.
Yeah, yeah, I'm here. Hey, good evening, you guys. Pleasure to meet you all. Yeah, just to give some background. Okay, you guys, do me. I'm here. Hello?
Yes, we can.
Yep, go ahead. Go ahead. Can you hear us, Veronica? I think she may be popping.
Oh, okay. Sorry, you so much. So, yeah, just to give some back. Yes, I can hear, can you hear?
I think we're experiencing a bit of a delay.
Just go ahead, Veronica. Well. Maybe it would help if I summarize, maybe if we get Veronica back, that'd be great, but. I I know operations have gone very well. You may recall. That the hours at one point were eight A M. To eight P M. And we modified the permit to allow it from. Eight to ten. That's worked well. We are also no longer appointment only as we were at the beginning, but we modified the permit for that. That seems to have gone well. Not seeing any significant traffic issues at the site. I know that's the case. You know, had companies doing quite well there. And no public safety issues as far as I know either. So it's really, th- this is a national company. You know, that that is the owner of this entity. They operate all over the country. They have a stellar record, one of the best operators in the country, quite frankly. And they're they're just very pleased with with how things have gone here. If you have any questions, I can try to answer them. Maybe Veronica. If I can't, you know, we'll we'll be able to hear from her, but happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Phil. Any questions or comments from the board at this point?
Hi, can you all hear me now? I'm so sorry. This is Veronica.
Yes.
We're just waiting for some questions from the board, Veronica.
I'm so sorry. I had terrible connection, y'all. I apologize.
Okay.
Veronica, was there anything like like that you would like to add on top of what Phil said?
Um, I I must have missed what Phil said, but I'll go ahead and just add my original content. You know, a- as a business, we've had for two thousand twenty-two, just to put in context, we've we've had about ninety-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven transactions with twenty-eight hundred new customers. And providing him their medicine. As of two thousand twenty-three, we've had about eighteen thousand with about estimated five hundred new customers. We've had an incredible partnership with the community, specifically Oars River Cleanup. You know, a lot of our businesses downtown that we partnered with with River Cleanups and doing some additional community service. Alongside Open Table as well. So it's been an incredible partnership. And and another one to mention is the Jazz Festival for the town of Maynard. It's been an absolute contribution to that every year thus far. And the last thing I'll leave you with is the the safety and security. We've had zero incidents. That have been of concern to the safety of our of our team and the community. So it's been an incredible partnership. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica. All right, I'll turn it back to the board for any questions or comments.
I was just gonna say, I know that on the original. Application, we heard from, you know. The police chief and stuff like that, but presumably with the staff report showing that they recommended approval. I'm assuming that there are no concerns there. Does that make sense?
We, yes, we do not have a specific statement from the police for for communication. However, I have received no complaints and I have not been made aware of any issues as chair. Doesn't mean there weren't any. Things filed. I I can't say what has been called in, but I have not been made aware of any any issues that needed to be brought to my attention.
So that's good enough for me.
Um, Annette? Any 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 questions, comments? You're on mute again. And that you need unmute.
I I always do that. I've gone there a few times and I think it's lovely. It's a beautiful place. I don't ever see any high traffic volume. I'm very quiet. And it's very neatly kept. It's beautiful inside.
Thanks.
Very nice.
Um, Bill, any thoughts?
No, I'm just fine. My staff hasn't raised any issues. I'm good with that.
Yeah, again, yes, I have not received. Any issues that have come to my attention. Jim, feel free to speak up if you have any comments or questions.
No, I don't have anything to say other than I think they've been a very good neighbor.
Thanks, Jim.
Absolutely.
I'll second that. Are you requesting, Phil, any modifications to the special permit?
No, we're not.
So the. The required actions or the requested actions on our board are three?
Chris?
Yes.
Can we can we ask if anybody in the audience has any comment?
Thank you. Yes, I'll open up for public comment on this on this for the sharing. The raise hand feature is available for any public comment at this time. And I'll I'll leave public comment open until, as I read through a couple of other items. So the requested action are three of the. The determine first is the determination. A determination that. The that the applicant continues to meet the special permit criteria. In section ten point four. Second is a determination. That the applicant continues to meet the. Criteria for the downtown overly district special permit in nine point four point six. And the third is the renewal of a special permit for a use to allow marijuana retail. Operation at twenty-two to twenty-four Main Street for a period of two years. I'm fine with making this all I want. I'll I'll make one motion at a time. If that's okay. So first I'll make a motion. That we that we determine that the applicant continues to meet the criteria and. For the special permit as described in section ten point four. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Pending any further discussion, I'll take roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
And I'm yes, so that's five zero for the first item. For the special permit for section ten point four. I'll make a motion to determine. That the applicant continues to meet the special permit criteria for the downtown overly district. In accordance with section nine point four point six. Do I have a second? Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? All right, I'll take roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
And I'm yes, that's five zero. For the. For the determination that the applicant meets the special permit criteria for the downtown overly district section nine point four point six. Item three. I'll make a motion to approve the special permit to allow a marijuana retail shop. At the location of twenty-two to twenty-four Main Street for a period of two years. The effective date. I believe should be today. Jim and Bill, help me out on that one. Should that should the effective date on that be today?
It should be, yes. I'll second that.
Okay, then just note that my motion is for the issuance of the special permit today. And it's been seconded. So any further discussion? I'll take roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
And I'm yes, that's five zero. Phil, those were the three items that were requested of the of the planning board for tonight's hearing. Is I I don't believe there's any further action here.
I think that's it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to close. I should have made a motion to close the hearing earlier, right? I'm I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor, by roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
And I'm yes. So it's five zero to close the hearing. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move to item two point two. This is. A hearing for the. Amendment to a use table. Table A and the and the business uses of our zoning bylaws. So I'll open up the hearing. For. You know, I just wanna make sure I got my words right. I'll open up the hearing. To discuss the amendment to section three point one point two, the use regulations for table A. For business uses to allow a trade shop use by right in the business, central business and the industrial zoning districts. And 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 by special permit of the zoning board of appeals within the healthcare industrial zoning district. So the hearings open. Do you all have access to? The materials or should I share my screen? We'll share the screen.
I've got them in front of me. I don't know if it would be beneficial for the.
I'll share my screen. Okay, so. Here's what we're talking about. The. The request here is simply to add. And Bill Crenshaw will correct me if I'm wrong, but simply to add. A line item. Under principal uses under section four, the business uses. Of table A and section three point one point two, and that line is simply trade shop. With an N under S one, an N under S two. An N under G R. And what does G R stand for?
General Residence.
General Residential. Why under? Business, why under central business? A B A. Which means through the zoning board appeals for the healthcare central. I always get this wrong. What is H C I again?
I believe it.
Healthcare industrial.
Healthcare industry. Why for industrial and for G A? Sorry, guys, I'm I'm blinking still.
That's a hard one.
Garden apartment.
Garden apartments. And an N under O S and O S is. There's gonna be a test after this, everyone.
O S, O S.
Yeah, open.
Open space?
Yeah.
Okay. Second. Is is to add the following definition, a trade shop to section eleven point zero under definitions. So under definitions, we will add trade shop. A building structure or premises. Used by a practitioner of a trade. Or a craft. And that's it.
And just to clarify, this is filling a void, right? Previously, our zoning bylaws did not reference. Trade shops. Is that correct, Phil?
It referenced it indirectly because it was lumped under a subtitle of accessory and other. So this is. Really putting it within the principal use category where it really belongs for clarity.
Great.
Any further discussion on this? I'm gonna stop sharing.
I believe that this is the language that we had discussed at previous meetings, so I think. I personally would love to hear if there's anyone. Any member of the public who has thought.
All right, yes, and I will open up for public comment. And second, I just wanna make sure that board comments are recognized first. Uh, Jim, any further thoughts?
None whatsoever.
Okay. All right. And that I assume no thoughts from you either.
Wow.
Okay. Yes, so my understanding is that this is just part of. She just kind of fell out of our previous work for the zoning bylaws that we've looked at previously. And it to me is just part of cleanup work that we do as well. So I will open it up for public comment. This time. Andy, I see your hand up. Can you please identify yourself for the record as usual?
Hi there, Planning Board. This is Andy Moreline at one twenty-three Summer Street. I have some concerns about this not being as listed in S one and S two. You know, one of the things that always comes up is that we have small tradespeople who bring their vehicles back and do things in their garages and. Especially since it says craft. It just throws a whole monkey wrench into it. Now, absolutely, you guys have it covered by A and B business accessory use. But I I think it just. By not saying it's by. By permit. In those areas, you're basically giving the inference that it's not that a tradesman is not allowed. In S one or S two. And. I think if we make people have to rent a separate space. We're gonna lose all the lower. End. Tradespeople that do a porch here and there to help your parents, help yourself. Things that you yourself can't do or might not be able to do. A lot of these are weekenders. A lot of these are people who do it part time. But if their neighbors attack them, they'll be forced not to be able to do any of their activities. And I think that this is. Granted, it's in the accessory, but I don't know why it can't be by permit. That's my only comment.
Thank you, Andy. Are there any other other public comments for tonight? Okay. Then we'll take Andy's comment. My understanding and and Bill Crenshaw, you've worked on this, so I'm gonna ask for your feedback. So I just so I understand this. This is saying. And I'll share my screen again. This is saying that. A trade shop. Cannot be used. Inside as in in a residential district because. As a business, primary business use, as a principal use, as a business use. Am I am I getting that correct?
Yeah, I mean, the key the key thing is the difference between principal and accessory. So this is a principal use, so. It can't be mostly a trade shop business at that site in secondary residential, it has to be. So that's what I was talking about. It's talking about something that is, you know. Hundred percent trade shopper. Or mostly trade shop. So it's talking about principal use only. That's why it's not allowed in a residential district. Although, as as was raised in the comment. An accessory use. You know. Through a. Primary principal use of residential could be allowed. Under other sections of.
So this doesn't, that's my understanding too. And when I read this, this does not preclude. An accessory use as a trade shop. In a residential district. This just says it can't be used as a primary use, meaning that it can't be the the property cannot be mostly used. As a trade shop.
Yep.
Andy, I see your hand. I will allow for clarification.
Andy Moreline, one twenty-three Summer Street. Just to reiterate, I think it's confusing, you know, it it doesn't clarify. I realize the accessory use. I just, I'm so nervous about people reading these and saying, oh. I have a neighbor next to me who has ladders, comes and goes, and they're gonna complain to town. And it's gonna become problematic for people who. You know, provide a really valuable service to our town, and I'll go off. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Andy.
I'll just chime in to say I agree that I think. Trade shops. All over town can do provide a valuable service. I think it's just a matter of. It may feel confusing to the layperson, but our zoning board and our. Building inspector really rely on this document, and I think that the clarification provided here about a primary use versus a non-primary use. While it may feel confusing, I do feel that it will benefit. The boards and the ability to regulate these things in the long run. Yeah.
Yeah, I I I appreciate. I appreciate Andy's perspective on this. I I don't know how to improve this, though, because if we were to change S one. In S two to a. A permit or say yes. And we can't say yes. If we said yes, that means a trade shop could move into any residential house. And it could be a full trade shop and not a not a house. But if we had a special permit, that means. The zoning board of appeals. Would have to file a special permit, but that it would still be essentially allowed. The full residential property could then be allowed to be a trade shop. If we if we turn this into either either a B A or or Y. And I don't know if I can, you know, I can't support that. So I don't. I don't know how to improve this. And, you know, in. You know, in in the framework that. Has been. As stated as as Andy stated, so. I do think, though, that this, so I I just wanna say, this allow, this does, this has nothing to do with ancillary use. Ancillary uses will still be allowed. And this just says you cannot have a primary use for a trade shop in residential neighborhood. Do you wanna add anything to that?
Chris, what it's really saying is you can have. A trade shop principal use in a business district. Because currently. It could be argued that we don't allow that. Because of the way it's placed in the zoning bylaw now, in moving it here to principal use. Clarifies that, yes, of course, you can open a trade shop in a business district.
Any other thoughts or comments from the board? Okay, I'll I'll entertain a motion. I think we need to make a make a motion and move this to what select board approved and move to select board.
I think we already did.
So just approve?
Yes, cuz we we provide it like for a draft, and so, yes, we could approve this as a final as well, yeah.
All right, if if you wanna make a motion, Bill. Please go ahead.
Uh, yeah. So I'd make a motion to. Approve the. The amendment to section three, the proposed amendment to section three point one point two use regulations, table A. Subsection four, business uses. And also the amendment to section eleven point zero definitions regarding trade shops.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All right, I'll take roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
And I'm yes, that's five zero in favor of approving. The motion. I'll make a motion to close this hearing.
Shotgun.
And I'll take roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
And I'm yes, it's five zero to close the hearing. Thank you. Thank you. Item three is open space and recreation plan approval. We're gonna skip that. I would like to go to item four, and this would be a conversation with the tree committee, and I believe there's a presentation. So I have here that Danny. I work, actually work again. I should be able to get his name right. Schisler. This is is here from the tree committee. Danny, if you could just identify yourself with the record and and any other members that may be joining you tonight.
Sure, Danny Schisler, tree committee. I live at thirty Parker Street. I'm joined by Steve Smith. Steve, do you wanna introduce yourself?
Sure, I'm Steve Smith. I live at Two Maple Court in Maynard.
Thanks, guys. Just for a little bit of background, the the chair of the the tree committee reached out to me about. Some interest in partnering through just some coordination and making sure that we're aligned and can help each other with master plan goals. So. I I just, I thought it'd be a great opportunity just to bring in members of the tree committee to see what what the thoughts they had and. Just to see how we can essentially help each other. So. I don't think I need to give much more than that, Danny. I'm welcome. You're welcome to take this over and show it. Show us what you what you have.
Thanks. Thanks, Chris. So we don't. Really have a formal presentation, but we'd love to just speak with you and give a little background on the. On the tree committee and what our goals are for the town, and then talk about potential partnership and collaboration. So. The tree committee is a small advisory committee that assists the tree warden in. Protecting and expanding Maynard Street canopy for economic and environmental benefits for the town. We do so in a couple of ways. One is through educating the public, and we do that through educational events, sidewalks. Things such as a fundraiser that Steve and his wife Liza have been running. It's actually this Saturday at the Fine Art Theater. They'll be screening a. A fantastic documentary called Kiss the Ground, and we already have some great attendance lined up for that. We also do it through grant seeking, which and seeking and soliciting town funds for expansion of tree planting. You've probably all noticed the beautiful selection and diverse selection of native trees in our downtown. And that was through the efforts of tree committee and our partner group Tree Core. And we also, we also seek to protect our our trees and expand them through the development of municipal bylaw, which we're working on right now. With the tree warden, Justin DiMarco. And seeking partnership with groups like the planning board so that we can understand how to, you know, regulate the removal and replacement of trees and make sure that our urban canopy. Is only strengthened through proposed projects for the town. So in that vein. in that vein, we sent a letter in early February asking about two potential points of collaboration. The first would be establishing a formal process for the committee to review proposed plans vis a vis the planning board. And from a a tree, a tree based lens and make sure that we're promoting the expansion of our urban canopy through native plantings and resilient plantings that will hold up over time. And we were thinking that this might be accomplished through the establishment of a liaison to work between the planning board and the tree committee. If that arrangement would be agreeable, who could basically bring plans to the tree committee for review and provide feedback as a committee through that liaison. So we think that creating that kind of position would be a really great way to promote information sharing and collaboration with the planning board moving forward. Second, we would like a chance to review and discuss the landscape regulations that govern the planning board landscape plan review and make recommendations to the planning board based on the tree committee's goals. So very likely this would involve developing or finding a landscape planting list that could be provided to developers and others who are in the business of landscape planning to help inform their designs and make sure that they're consistent with the tree committee and the town's goals for our urban canopy. So those are our two requests, and I have a third informal request. We would love for any planning board members who could make it and who would be interested to join us on a walkthrough of our town downtown arboretum during our week of trees, which is a week of tree based events that we're holding from April twenty-fourth to April twenty-eighth. The the walk is one P M. On Friday, the twenty-eighth, and we would love for you to join tree committee members to see our downtown arboretum and hear about our ambitions for the coming year. So I'll just turn it over to Steve in case I missed anything, but I think that's the presentation.
Yeah, I think you did very well. Thanks, Danny. And I just wanted to add, you know, we are pretty active group. We are installing trees for the Arbor Day celebration. We've planted several at the high school. Last year, we did three redwoods at the high school. Year before that, we did a tree along the bike trail. We've planted a tree at Fowler. And the goal of the movie event this coming weekend is to raise enough to do some planting at the Veterans Memorial and the island across from the movie theater. So we're we're trying to actively, you know, create new plantings downtown that aren't, you know, kind of the Norway maple pear tree monoculture that's kind of existed there for a long time. So and if you do, you know, take a walk, if you can't join us for the walkthrough, if you do take a walk downtown, you'll see that all the trees are tagged. So you can identify the trees and get some sense of, you know, how they're doing, what they're doing, what they look like. Bark and all sorts of other interesting items about them. So yeah, we we hope we can partner with you and and move forward towards, you know, the whole idea of a comprehensive master plan for Maynard.
Well, thank you both. So before we get too much into it, I had a question. You refer to the downtown arboretum. Can you can you elaborate on what you mean by that?
I'll let Steve take that one.
So when 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 we were engaged with the tree warden to select the plant material downtown, folks like Danny and Neil Peterson and Lee and Ilers and Kate Wheeler, the the group of us got together and kind of talked about what that what that plant palette would look like. And again, along the lines of not having a monoculture that's susceptible to insect and disease problems, we looked at what native plant trees specifically would survive in kind of the urban health scape that's downtown, you know, lots of salt, lots of heat. And so we were very careful in selecting those trees. Again, with the idea that we would go to natives as much as possible. So I want to say that something like eighty-five percent of the trees downtown are native trees. Just a couple of exceptions, one based on a request from one of the business owners downtown. But most everything else is native. So we have some interesting oaks. We have a sweet gum. We have we have a bunch of different trees that aren't normally found. With the idea that, yeah, we're going to create this kind of interesting arboretum that's both, you know, great to look at aesthetically, but also an opportunity to educate people about the benefit of native trees and and what they can do to help with climate change. So.
So the arboretum refers to all the treescape in the in the downtown is what you're referencing. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing another element that that I should should check out. So.
No, pretty much. We're trying to, we're trying to think of the center of town as like a hub, and then these folks going out from that hub. So there are things like we've done a couple of, you know, of the improved native chestnut in the cemetery as trial trees. We're doing some work there. Like I said, we're doing some work. We've done some work with the schools. Our next Arbor Day planting, which will be during the week of trees, will be a tree demonstration at Town Hall. We're looking to plant a sour wood there, which is kind of an unusual tree, which would be really interesting. So, yeah, we're just trying to, you know, not only preserve the canopy, but expand it and all in the hopes of kind of kind of mitigating climate change and and creating an environment where disease and pests aren't going to ravage what all the work that we kind of do.
And I'll just add to that, that as Steve mentioned, an important component of this is education and the tags that we have, I would say differentiate our our trees from just being, you know, a selection of of tree of street tree plantings. They are, they have identities and people are able to come and learn about those trees from the tags. And in many ways, what we're doing with using, you know, kind of uncommon native tree plantings, it's not only a proof of concept, but it also demonstrates to folks that these are trees that you can plant in your yard and and maintain, and they will have a great chance of survival and beautify beautify the town. So while we're in our infancy as a committee, we do hope that we can eventually expand our programs, educational and otherwise, and and help people to plant trees on private property and and along with the the public shade tree expansion that we've been working on. So.
For item one, a liaison. Is that is that a request of someone from the planning board to to liaise with the tree committee? Or is it a member of the tree committee to liaise with the planning board?
I think we're open to your recommendations here, and we we'd love to hear how you think we could best accomplish this. But I I would think it would be the latter. But again, open to suggestions and what you think would work for the for the planning board.
Generally, I'm happy, I'm on board with any type of coordination or collaboration. And so any thoughts on item one from the board, the liaison sort of coordination sort of element?
Yeah, Chris, I mean, the subject was described as the need to, you know, make sure planning board brings proposals and plans over to the tree committee so they can have input, but I think the best thing we can do is simply put them on the staff distribution list for all plans, because if they wait for us to bring them over, they might run out of time. So they'll be the among the group, the first to get it. And I think that's the easiest way to make sure that they take a look at all the development projects coming in.
Yeah, I agree with that. And so so Danny, can you remind me, the tree committee, who do you report to in in town in sort of the town governance?
Justin DiMarco.
Okay. Yes, I think in the past, Bill, we've assumed that DPW would is the entity that governs, not governs, I don't, that's not the right word, but the chain of command for the for the tree committee, but I think we can put them on the distribution list. I agree with that. There's also another element here, Danny and Steve, from liaison. Liaison is not just about getting plans to review. Liaison is coordinating. And I think we can I'm I'm happy to designate a, you know, I can be that specific person from the planning board for now. And as we go forward, we can see how it works. I try not to members of the planning board can get kind of busy, so I try not to overwhelm their plates, but I'll I can I can do this because I'm also interested unless unless Natalie or Annette or Jim. Bill Crunch was too busy, but unless someone wants to be kind of the liaison for the time being.
For, well, I work during the week. I'm gonna show when do it's gonna be a weekly meetings or monthly meetings. How does this work? As far as do how how do we go out once a week to see the to evaluate the trees? What, how does that work?
Danny, Steve, how often do you meet?
We meet monthly, yeah. Apologies, I'm getting a call, a security call from the arboretum, Chris, so I need to just pop off for a second. I'll let Steve take the reins here.
Yeah, I I don't think it's, I think we were more thinking we would support that you guys, but you're more than welcome to to join our meetings. Obviously, they're open. And we we do talk about, you know, a lot about planting. But we we I don't think we've really vetted that through completely, but that's a great question for us to kind of go back. We're meeting tomorrow night, so it'd be a great question to go back to them. And I hate to speak for the the committee themselves and kind of ask and see, you know, how they see this moving forward. I know Danny and I have our ideas, but we want to be respectful of the other members as well.
Sure. Here's here's how I can I see one avenue for this moving forward. Is that, you know, a at we we receive applications for special permits and site plan review. Those would probably be the two most important sort of items that we review that would have input from from the tree committee. So those come to us, we have a pre-application meeting. There is a distribution list of materials. So I think a couple of simple things we can do, get you on the distribution list. Have you, if if needed, have you participated in a pre-application hearing, if it makes sense? Sometimes there's no you know, sometimes
Three elements in there, yeah.
Right, you know, if if there if this is a special permit for the use of a doctor's office and they're not doing landscape, you know, there's no reason to participate. But so get on the distribution list, maybe participate in a pre-application meeting. And then join the planning board hearings as a as a member of the of a tree committee, and then we can get specific and direct feedback from a member of the tree committee regarding that that application. And I think that's all very practical stuff that can can help projects along. Does that make sense?
Yeah, totally. Agreed.
Everything okay, Danny?
Yeah, good to go. Thank you.
So I to to me, that all makes sense. And what I can do is speak with Bill to make sure you're Bill Nams to make sure you're on the distribution list. For starters. So we had a recent, so we get applications that come through that and special permits that we approve that have treescape in them. One recent one was for the marijuana shop at Help Me Out Guys. The address was what twenty-four Nation Street?
Yes.
Yeah, it was art specialties. So they just received a special permit from us maybe a month ago. And that special permit included, I believe, up to ten thousand dollars in tree plantings. Am I getting this right, team?
I think the total was ten thousand dollars. I don't know if the amount allotted for trees. I don't remember what exactly it was supposed to include, but I guess I can I can step in. I'm bouncing back and forth through my training in this. It was a work of up to ten thousand dollars so that they will be placing a tree and a tree well, two trees, two tree wells of up to ten thousand dollars, just in case, you know, they make a really fancy tree well. They don't need to do that. We we limited the amount of money that they're spending.
So that's in front of their their building there?
It's meant to be, I believe, be in like the general vicinity of the building, not necessarily immediately in front of it, but correct, the downtown overlay district is how I worded it.
So Steve and Danny, you know, did that trickle down to your committee? Now, were you were you aware of that? Okay. So I think that's something we can improve is to make sure that, because what I like ideally, I think it's helpful for the tree committee to have input on what those plantings will be. So I would like what I'll do is I'll make sure that that information gets guys, and I would appreciate review and advice on, you know, the best way to to use that decision that we made.
Yeah, and I'm not sure whether the board knows who makes up this, but Danny works at Arnold Arboretum at a very high level position there. We also have Neil Peterson on the board who is is he, I don't think he's a professor, but he works for
Research ecologist at Harvard.
Yeah, the Harvard Forest, and I've spent my whole life basically in construction and landscape construction, thirty-five years of doing urban planting. And so we have a, we have a pretty deep group of guys that can kind of look at, you know, how things work and how things don't and what's, you know, I have a long history of what's successful and not successful in urban planting. So I think we have a good team to help help make those decisions.
So I'll make sure that that information gets to you guys, and that what I would like is a, if if it's possible, some type of formal review. And then communication back to the planning board on proposed, you know. I because I think my understanding is Justin may have locations in mind, perhaps. But what I'd like to hear from you guys is, um, what 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 what, how can we best use the resource that we just obtained from an applicant? So I can get you the decision. The decision says something like up to ten thousand dollars will be spent on tree plantings, and we keep it vague because we don't want to hand tie applicants or town staff too much. We want some flexibility, so the vagueness is there by design. But now we have thousands of dollars that we can direct towards tree plantings. And so I would love to have your input on how to do that the best we can.
Fantastic.
Chris, I'm not gonna jump into officially be a liaison necessarily. However, my background is horticultural related. The one thing on the planning board that I don't use very often. So I'd love to. I'm interested for sure.
That sounds great. Let's, um, so so that's a type of decision, it's type of an application that comes in periodically where we the application didn't necessarily start with tree plantings, and I don't even know if the initial material that was presented to us included tree plantings, but we wanted for for the applicant, the applicant to meet this this special permit criteria, they need to do essentially improvements to the downtown. And that's what we came up with for them to do improvements on. Other types of projects that we will get will be site plan reviews. So, for example, the fire station came to the planning board for site plan review. We did a landscape review of that of that application, when that was two, two, three years ago, I think, when that came through. So when we have those items, I would absolutely love to have your input on site plan reviews, because typically those include sometimes they include landscaping.
Great.
So I think you're getting a resounding yes on all this, guys, is I think the bottom line. Regarding the landscape regulations. Look, look, we simply don't have enough heads. I don't have enough headspace to go through it. So if you guys are want to take a stab at improving landscape regulations, have at it. There's no, I'm not, I'm not getting in the way of that. And I don't think anyone, I won't speak for the committee. Is there anyone that would? Do people agree with that statement that they can just go ahead? Yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah.
No.
I got a problem with them just doing the landscape. I don't want them to do landscape regs. I want them to look at the zoning bylaws. I want them to look at the P B rules and regs. They all affect trees in some way. So I don't care. It's not just types of trees, but I want to know, you know, the spacing for a buffer, you know, they they pop up in all those documents. So.
Bill, I have a day job.
Yep. Yep. Well, you just, you know, just search for the word tree.
Yeah, and you know, if we have time, the planning board has been very busy these last few months, but maybe if we find some time in the future. Maybe we could carve out half an hour to walk through some of the regs, um, to see what we can do together. Um, but in the meantime, if you guys want to go through. Um, and I hate to put this completely on you, but if you want to go through the landscape regs. I'm fully in support of that, and then um, we can, we can catch up offline to see what that kind of looks like from your point of view. And to see how big of an effort is to make changes.
Yeah, I think our real goal and kind of how, our thought process is to come with, to you with solutions, right, we don't want to burden anybody with extra work, but. Um, yeah, we would love to the opportunity to do that, I think, so. And again, we would invite you, if you'd like to walk through the um, the downtown trees and um. I, Danny, do you remember what the date is, I think it's the twenty?
Yeah, it's the twenty-eighth at one o'clock.
At one o'clock, and, and Jody, uh, forgive me, Danny, what's her last name?
Uh, Julie Coop from the.
Julie Coop, yeah, from D C R will be joining us, so we're gonna talk about some additional grants to do some more tree planting in town, so. She's interested in, she's a fan of Maynard and interested in what we've been doing, so, you know, we're. We're trying to expand what we're, what we're trying to accomplish here.
Um, do you? Do you know where you're gonna start, where you're gonna meet, or do you have an email list for distribution for that event?
Yeah, we can make that happen for you guys for sure.
Yeah.
And Neil will be leading that, he's done several walkthroughs with community members already through the downtown, so.
Did, did, did all, did all that help?
Yes.
Absolutely, thank you all so much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
What else can we do?
Hey, before they get away, Chris, I gotta add one more thing.
Yeah, so you see what happens when you guys come to us?
I want, I want you guys to. Get together with Nemser about the powder mill corridor project. Because that's. A big project to reimagine that corridor, and it's affecting the right of way, so, you know, you know, less road, more bikes, more beds, but. You know, I want in thirty years that it include. You know, nice trees and not just this grony little strip of well-meaning, but now dead trees. Because they might not leave enough space, so I'd appreciate it if you could uh. Keep an eye on that project as well.
That sounds like a great opportunity, so I think we'd be happy to put some eyes on that.
Do you, do you know what Bill's talking about, Danny and Steve?
Steve does, I, I don't know yet.
Yes, I do.
I'm just taking some notes. Yeah, so what else, that it?
Thank you, everyone.
Great, thank you all so much.
Yeah, we'll be in touch, I will, I'll provide some instruction to, to, to um, the planning department. Um, to coordinate these uh come, upcoming issues or issues, items, um, the, that um. That marijuana shop where we have the, the money for tree plantings, I, that's prob- that, I don't know how fast that's gonna happen, so I might ask for. Feedback on that first. Right? Because I think that might have a critical path.
Yeah, perfect, we're good at huddling up on like Sunday afternoons and walking downtown, so we can, we can go down and take a look and see where. You know, um, Justin will obviously have input, especially when it comes to underground utilities. Where things can be located, but we can off, obviously make some suggestions, so, especially for varieties, so.
Oh, there's one more thing I wanted to mention, um. Um, we, we don't have good. I don't, I don't know if this is in your court or not, but I don't think we get, have good standards on how to plant trees. For the long term in the downtown sustainably. Um, I'm not saying we don't, um, but I think you guys may, you guys probably are pretty much, very much aware of that. You know, if you don't do good plantings correctly with, with, you know, enough. A whole, you know, the whole soil apparatus surrounding it. Um. You're just putting in tree pits, it's not always the best way forward, so is. Maybe some thought on that over time to figure out how we can make improvements as we go, as we. Do work in the downtown to help with that scenario, do you know what I'm getting at?
So we're actually working with um. Other groups in town, the, the community gardeners, um, beautify Maynard, all those organizations. And we've started to talk about what we could do um to improve. Even the look of the tree pits, um, we're considering the, the, a test. A test run at the uh tree out in front of C V S, there's, I think it's a uh tulip tree. Um, removing the cobbles, expanding the bed, and then planting native pollinators in there. Um, to kind of change the look, you know, kind of, I hate to say Hudson, because I know everybody cringes when. People mention Hudson, but kind of like the look of, that Hudson has been going for with kind of. Trees popping through some understory, under, under plantings. Um, and that's, that's kind of the, the thought process that's going on there, where. We're doing that in several locations, we are actually um, working on a couple islands. Over across from the movie theater and the public parking, we're working with Justin to remove concrete, do some plantings. And then add some um, pollinator, understory, uh, perennials. Uh, and shrubs to start to improve the, the overall look of downtown, and it kind of softened the. The urban look of how things look um there, so. Yeah, there's a lot of, lot of folks, I think, out there and, and the Maynard community that really are advocating for kind of. Making downtown definitely greener, more inviting, more business friendly, so.
And, you know, if, if the planning board is. Giving direction to applicants to in, install. Trees, um, and I want them to last, you know, so I want the, the whole soil conditions and the whole. Um, subservice conditions to be conducive for soil, for tree growth over time, and not just, you know, the old school way of planting a tree and let it die in twelve years. So.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're right on point, Chris, it's also so much about adding as much structural soil around the planting. Under the pavement, existing pavement and concrete as much as you can, decompacting. The uh, the fill that's in place, which is something we'll be doing in uh, in the, in the parking lot islands. Uh, and then looking, looking at surface plantings, this uh ground plane plantings is, as Steve's been talking about, so yeah, there are definitely standards. Above and beyond old paradigms that help trees last decades or centuries is, as opposed to, you know, five years and then their. Need replacing.
And if there's a way to work those into our design specs or our um. Design standards or biolos in some way, or maybe it's just in the landscape plan itself, um, that would, I think. I, I, I see these as assets, of course, so I, you know, I want the asset to be protected as best I can.
Well, I think you're right in line with how we think of them as well, so that's really our, our goal, right? We plant uh for the shade of our children, not for necessarily our own, so.
Right, right, so, and if the planning board's stamping these things, putting their, their stamp on it, you know, I definitely want to make sure they last, because it is. Planning department, so.
Right.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay.
You guys, I like the tree committee, I want to be on the tree committee.
Oh, oh, easy, hold on, hold on. Hold on, you're not allowed to go. No one's, no one's allowed to go, and that, and that, you're not allowed to go either, you have.
Any, any of trees or plantings.
Guys, this is my jam.
Oh, I have to come with you then to learn.
I think we're gonna have two liaisons for this one.
I'll have to come and learn.
Yep.
Hi Julia, how are you?
Hi guys, okay, I think, I think I can leave my training, um. It says thank you on the screen, and they're just, don't tell anyone, um, hopefully, I still get my, my credit, and so, um. Hi, it's sorry for uh having to kind of jump in and out, um, I tried to kind of keep an eye on things. Um, as such as possible, have my computer at my laptop next to each other, um, so we're, we're doing our best we can.
Uh, for the record, I am recording.
Awesome. That's what we like.
And I recorded it to the cloud, I hope that's. The right move.
Correct, so that's what, that's what um our minutes take, we'll, we'll take this. So, um.
Well, I can, I, I can open up that item, so let me open up.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Uh, okay, so let's open up item three, open space and recreation plan approval, Julia, thank you for being here. Um, after your training, uh, I, so I don't, does the board have any, any concept of this at all, or should we just allow Julia just to present? Okay, yeah.
Go ahead, Julia.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just, I have like a quick. Presentation, but um, I'll, I'll make it pretty simple, and then we'll just go through the, some of the highlights of the document, so, um. To give you an idea. Let's see if I can get this to go, um, sorry, one. Um, so. Open space and recreation plan, um, what we will do is our plan is from twenty twenty-three um to twenty thirty, so. It was supposed to be from twenty twenty-two, but unfortunately, um. Due to me being part-time conservation agent, um, and, you know, having many, many hats. Um, I wasn't able to finish it in twenty-two, the nice thing is that now it ends at a, at a nice twenty thirty, which. Um, many of you may also have that feeling of ending on a twenty twenty-nine, really just wasn't great for me. So, looking in the positive realm. So. Can I change my slide, there we go, okay, so what is the open space and recreation plan, we call it the O S R P. Um, it's a tool in which communities can plan for the future of its conservation and recreation resources. Um, it's informed through public participation, uh, process, it reflects the needs of community members. Um, it's then reviewed and approved by the Commonwealth, by the Department of Conservation Services, um. To ensure that they conform to the O S R P requirements, um, and the big reason why we need it is because. Uh, this will make us eligible for D C S grant programs, um, for up to seven years that, that we have. Um, an, an updated. Uh, plan. So when I talk about like conforming to the O S R P requirements, what does that look like, um? There is this wonderful open space and recreation planners workbook, um, and. Every single O S R P that you will see in the state looks like this, so. Um, you might think as you were going through it, like, it seems really repetitive, or like, the way that the sections are split up are weird, um. And, and I agree in some places, but that's um, every community sections three, you know, uh subsection A. Is regional context, um, you know, we have to follow this, um, this model. The only area that we have some leverage or, or, um. You know, that we don't have to follow exactly is in the appendices, we can start to kind of, um. Pull the, they, they allow us as planners to pull the appendices together, um, in a, in a different way that, than we would. Um, than, than they say, so, um, that's kind of my brief overview. Um, the reason why it's in front of you is because you are um legally required to approve this plan. Uh, before I can get it to the state, so, um, before I go into kind of the depths of our plans. Um, you might be wondering like, why is this in front of you and not conservation or recreation, um, they both have reviewed it. Um, recreation is currently, uh, they wanted a little bit more time to do a review, so. They hope to get their, their letter of approval um to me by uh Tuesday. Uh, which is when I will go, be going to the select board and doing this presentation for them, um, so. Does anyone have any questions on, on that, kind of the, the gist of what it is? No. Okay. Um, okay, so, oh, hold on. Why won't it let me see? The actual plan. There we go. Okay. So here is our, scroll the way shop, here is our open space and recreation plan. It is very long, um, so I'm not expecting you guys to, you know, read it in detail. Um, but basically what I need from you is a letter of, of approval that you approve this going forward in the process, um, you know. The biggest change that you'll see, just kind of bring you to. Um, down to our plan summary, um. The biggest change you'll see from the last one, which was written in twenty seventeen, um, there was a, a weird time in which. Um, I don't really know what happened with my predecessors, I think in, they wrote one, and then it was for five years. And then they changed it to be seven-year plan, so then they allowed them to submit a two-year plan, so we had quite a few on file, um. With the, with the state, but the last one in twenty seventeen and, and the ones prior all kind of followed a very similar narrative. Of, of anti-development, um, and, you know, I think that maybe because of having. Uh, you know, that, at that point, it was just a conservation agent. Um, you guys got me, which is uh, as an environmental planner, um, I believe in sustainable development, so. That's kind of the theme that you'll find across, um, the plan is, you know, preserving open space. While also allowing for sustainable development, um, to, to continue in the town. Um, yes, Chris.
Uh, I just want to point out that that's in line with uh the community development principles and the master plan, so. Um, I'm on board with that paradigm and not really on board with the old paradigm, because it didn't align with. You know, the community development principles of the master plan.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, you know, um. So, yeah, the next thing I was gonna say is that where this plan started was in twenty eighteen with Katie Young. Um, she started it, I think, at the same time as the master plan. And really tried to change a lot of those things, it still had, I mean, the, the, the creps of the, you know, there are certain paragraphs that. Or certain wording that was, was a little anti-development, uh, you know, I, I tried to change, but. Um, yeah, she did a really good job of, you know, in twenty eighteen, starting the, the public engagement aspect. Um, so back then, uh, many of you were probably ones that, um. Uh, filled in her survey, it was either in twenty twenty-eighteen or twenty-ninety, um. But four hundred and forty-five residents filled in that survey. Um, when I picked this up and, you know, started talking with the state about getting our, our plan in. Um, the delay was that, you know, because of COVID, they really wanted to see some, some extra things that aren't in the workbook, so. Um, they wanted an updated survey because of how people and their relationship with our open space and recreation has changed. And through COVID. Um, and so, we went from seeing people maybe use fields like. Every once in a while, or, or go for a walk maybe once a season in, in conservation land, um, to using things every single day. Uh, so that was really important, uh, to capture in uh our survey and also, yeah, in, in the plan. Um, that we do have a lot of people using, using our resources, um. And yeah, it's, it's a, it's a pretty important part of, of our town, so. Looking at, you know, I'll, I won't go through the, a whole entire plan, um, I'll allow you to ask questions at the end if you have any specific ones. But, um, looking at, let's see. Uh, some of our, it's hard, my, my sharing screen is blocking my tabs, um. But so, looking at the appendices, um, we have. I jumped to appendix B, but that's fine, so, so which is um ADA self-evaluation, um. So this is a requirement for, um. Us to go through every single, uh. Like park and uh mainly just parks is really what we're, we're not going through every single conservation land. Um, to see how it lines up with the ADA, um, and as you can see here. Um, a lot of this work was again done by Katie, I want to make sure that we're giving her, her the credit, uh, I, I was not involved in this part. Um, she went through each of these parks and, um, you know, did an assessment with. Um, based on the ADA, and then tried to talk about like a transition plan of how do we get this to, to a more. Uh, responsible item, so, um, you'll see some of these items, um. Golf course is obviously a huge one that, that many of us are aware of. Golf course is obviously a huge one that, that many of us are aware of, um. The, the Ice House Landing, um, we say it's, uh. Accessible, ADA accessible, but uh. That the actual ramp, it's launch ramp itself, um. Is not like ADA. It's, it's a kayak launch ramp, so there's like, it's accessible but not ADA accessible, things like that. Um, and so you'll see some of these things in here, one of them being obviously real road playground and, um. If you aren't aware, uh, I am doing some, some major work over there. Um, with the conservation subcommittee, um, to build a universal design playground. Um, so children between the ages of zero to twelve, um. Can enjoy a, a playground and, and not have to leave town if they have any physical, um, disabilities. So that's kind of this one, um, saying I'm having questions. On, on the ADA stuff.
I, I have a question about. The, uh. Right-hand column is the action year, so did we not update that or did we not, you know, scorecard that?
So, yeah, so the, the. A lot of these things started already, so I didn't update them, but uh, you can definitely add that to your, to your comments. Um, that will be submitted to me to update this. If you would like. So basically what has to happen is all your comments that you have that we talk about in a public meeting need to be written down and submitted to the state. Um, so I can make those corrections beforehand, but they, they need to be aware of, of the concerns that you have. Okay, so next up. Is, um, the survey, so this is the twenty eighteen survey, um. You're welcome to, to go through, um, all of the questions from the twenty eighteen and the twenty twenty-two survey. Are almost exactly alike. There was a few that were open-ended that I made into, um. Multiple choice, just because it was easier, um, to do some analysis. So then what I did for twenty twenty-two is. So here. Here in twenty twenty-two, I started to put things together, um. Not on this area, but if we scroll up. You'll start to see some of the items have twenty eighteen information as well, um, just to, to. Help understand the data a little bit more. I didn't want to combine it because we, you know, the state asked to have the separate information. Um, in twenty twenty-two, we got about two hundred residents, I'm pretty sure. Um, so not, not as good as twenty eighteen, it's the four hundred and forty-five, um. But the two hundred and twenty-two residents were, were within a month, um, in the twenty eighteen was, was open for six months. So I feel like, you know, in the grand scheme of things, um. Not, not too bad. I will say as you're going through the, the survey, which I highly recommend you look at some of the answers, um. Just take a look at the demographics, it's information on, on who is answering the survey, because that kind of tells you a lot. Um, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of like, I don't support playgrounds, um, you know. Kind of not supporting a lot of items, and when you see that the demographics is, you know, maybe older and doesn't have children in their home. It, it makes a little bit more sense, um, so that's kind of the cons of getting only two percent of the population. But, um. Yeah, so as we, let me go back down to kind of the open-ended question, which I thought was the most interesting in here, um. I love a good word cloud, um, see if, you know, work with planners, we, we like to make things look pretty. Uh, so. Good guy out of the two hundred answers, um, which many of you, you, uh, filled out, thank you very much. Uh, some people were not very nice, not saying any of you weren't, but, um. I took, basically took the, the gist of what they were trying to say. Um, in their feedback and, um, propped it into some of these themes, so maintain existing facilities. Um, was the most sought-out, uh, theme of, of all of this, which we know. Uh, is a huge problem in Maynard, um, but then the second most, um, said comment was. Um, create a, a recreation department and, um. You know, this is something that the Recreation Commission is really trying to push forward, um, of, of potentially getting, you know, a staff member. Um, to help out with, with some of these items that they, they really struggle with, uh, and as we go through. Um, I was just at their meeting, helping them out with the Master Plan Implementation Committee, uh, and. Yeah, there's a lot of things that they just really struggle with without having that, that support staff, so. You know, something to keep in mind as, um, you know, potentially we'll, we'll see that come up, uh, in the future. And, and you guys might be asked, um, to show your support or, or, um, to be involved in that conversation. Um, so yeah, there's also maps and, um. Some other information, I don't need to, I don't think you need to go through all of those, uh, but let me know if you have any questions.
Um, I got a big picture question.
Yeah.
What type of teeth does this, does this ha- plan have for decision-making later on?
Um, it's, I mean, it's similar to the, the master plan, right? So, you know, we, we write these plans. We love a good plan, um, and, and we use them to our advantage and when we go to get. Um, grant money, so, um. For example, I was just able to secure a kayak rental station, um, at Ice House Landing for the summer. Um, and the way I did that was, you know, using the survey. In which eighty percent of the people in both twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-two, um. Wanted boating facilities, so I was, you know, using, using the information to your advantage of the, the. That's coming through these plans, um. But I wouldn't say it has like. Teeth in which there is, um. Something that's gonna happen if you, we've, we don't succeed in any of these goals.
So it has utility, for sure, and guidance and in obtaining grants. Um, but this isn't something that is required to be followed essentially by any town staff or any member of the government.
No. Yeah, just like any other plan, it's, it's there as a, as a, um, mechanism, but. There's nothing that's gonna happen if we don't follow it.
Um, another big picture question, we're. We're an environmental justice community, does that get weaved into this plan at all?
So not in this plan necessarily, um. Unfortunately, with the master plan, we're hoping to do an update with that, so, you know, we, we put that in there, um. Because we're not. So there's two different types of environmental justice communities, there is, uh, based on minority status and based on income, and we're just based on income. Um, and then there's, there's the two, so you're minority and income, um, so. Yeah, that makes us eligible for some more grant opportunities, particularly in the powder mill corridor, which is really exciting since we have all of that work going on. Um, but it doesn't necessarily get brought up in, in the open space and recreation conversation.
Um, so it sounds like Julia, your request is for the planning board to review this and provide you written comments by. The, this week.
Yeah, I mean, I was hoping that if you had any comments, um, already that, um, if you've reviewed it. Um. Let me know, like, like those, uh, on updating that, the ADA and a timeline plan, um. It seems like you might want a little bit more time, um, so. If that. Is so, uh, yeah, if I could get them before I go up in front of the select board, um. That would be great. The one thing I would ask for tonight is, um, that you approve. The, um, the plan. Um, because I need a, a quorum of approval. Um, so I, I'm, I gladly take those, those comments, um. If you want to like gather them and, and submit them to, to. Me as conservation, me as planning can, can put them together and then me as conservation can receive them, um. But yeah, I just, I want to make sure that when I'm in front of the select board, the things that they're gonna ask me are, you know, did all the other boards that. Are supposed to be involved, um, were they involved? And, and I want to be able to say yes.
Um, okay, so board, what do we, what do we think about that?
Um, that makes sense, I have to admit, I did not read through. Every page of the sixty-four pages, but I did get a chance to, uh, you know, look through it generally and read some of the survey results also, which was. Very interesting for sure, um. I think it, it looks comprehensive and, and good to me, and I'd love to, I'll take some more time to, you know, read through it more completely. Um, to give you more feedback, but overall. I think it looks great.
Um, can we? Are we allowed to approve this and then provide additional comments on it? Cause I, 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 we usually do it the other way around, of course.
And I'm trying to figure out if the comments are from the planning board or from individuals, what? What's needed for the. Acceptance process.
So for the acceptance, I need a letter of, um, approval, um, basically stating that the vote that you do. Um. Comments, you'll see that chapter ten says comments and it's empty, um, that's because I'm, I'm waiting to, to. Be in front of all of these boards and, and get the comments, um, so. Yeah, it would, you know, it become from. The planning board, um. It, it, it's, so it's a little bit different because it's. The thing is with, with this is, it's not legally binding, um. You know, it's more of like, most of the comments that people do are, are, for example, recreations was. You know, I know we own, we own land and you put it under select board and we would like. The map to show that recreation owns, owns the property, um. So they're gonna submit that as, as one of their comments, um, from the entire. Board, so if you're uncomfortable with that, then, um. You know, I would request a letter of, we, we approve the, the concept and the idea, we just want to. Um, to review it a little bit more, just so that I have some, some teeth going into the select board, um. To get them to approve. Uh, I think. Your next meeting is the twenty-eighth, so if you want to wait to do the official approval, um, until then, that. Would be ideal, but I think that, that might be more what you're comfortable with.
Um, I'm happy to help, um, either way, um, I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing. And, you know, doing what you, what's needed for this. Um, it sounds like we may be able to vote. To take a vote on the approval of this plan and then provide. If there's any individual comments as, as members of the community, we can provide those as members of the community.
Or, or you can provide them as, as the planning board if you want to review that on the twenty-eighth.
I mean, it's not, it's not our plan, so I don't really see a need to have collective comments coming from the. Planning board on this, Bill, Bill and Jim, help me out, you've done this a lot. I don't know, I don't know what, I don't know what, how to proceed.
I, 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 myself, I think you can go ahead with it, uh, the way you, uh, uh, have, uh, spoken about.
Bill, and procedurally, what do you think?
My, my thought is, you know, we gotta do whatever the. State requires done, what, and that requires approval by the planning board, but. You know, come from individuals, that's, that'd be great too. Just not a hundred percent clear that it can come from individuals.
So comments can come from individuals, I mean, anyone could comment on it, um, it'll go on to the, on to the website and, um, anyone who has comments. Well, that will get put into, um, public record, um. So.
So I, overall, I like. The things in here that are incorporated, I like to, I like the way this is approached, I like the paradigm that's being used. I don't have much comments on, you know, the individual items, I'm looking at section seven, section eight, that's kind of like the real, the real meat of this. Um. That all seems well in line with how, how things we've been, the town has been discussing in the past. So. It's not like, I don't, my comments won't be about like, taking out one of those big picture items, like. You know, we talk about drinking water protection, we talk about, um. Enforcement, um, on, for conservation enforcement and stuff like that, so. I'm, I'm fine with taking an approval vote tonight. Um, and then I'm happy to, to collate comments from planning board members and pass those along too. Um, if there's any specific items that members have, does that sound okay? Bill and Jim, I'm, and asking. They've been through this before. Okay. Okay, so let's do this, we'll, please send all comments to me and, um, I guess Julia. Um, over the next, you know, period of week, week or two or so. And then, um, we'll put them together and have them as a, as a package of comments from the planning board. Any further discussion on this? All right, I'll make a motion to approve the open space and recreation plan as presented this evening. About a second. Bill, you're smiling, it's like we shouldn't be doing this.
No, you're just gonna like how I vote.
Okay. Um, I'll, let's, we'll take a vote, um. We'll save you for last, Bill, and Natalie. Jim.
Yes.
And that.
Yes.
I'm a yes, and Bill, can you show your last?
Yeah, I gotta abstain, because I didn't even realize it was on the agenda, so I didn't look at it.
Okay, alright. So it's four zero for approval.
Thank you, guys.
So again, happy to take comments and we'll pass along those. Um, you know, if there's any, I'm thinking, I see a couple typos and stuff like that too, so.
Yeah, yeah, but I think the. It's a very weird process and, um, state tries to keep it. Like even before I can get it to the state after a select board, I have to send it to MAPC, who then will deem it ready for the state, so. Very long process, um, and my hope is that we'll be ready for kind of grant season, which starts, um. In September, so, um, you know, if, if DCS comes out with any grants, my, my hope is that we'll be on the books. And ready to go for, for the September wave.
I mean, this, this is ready for select board, this is ready for MAPC. And I feel like.
But I will definitely take any. Yeah, a, any, any comments, any feedback, um, I, as you saw, it's very long and I've read it about a thousand times, so. I don't really see any of those, the, the little typos anymore.
Well, thank you, um. Julia, there's no bill numbers, so there's no planning, planner updates, uh, do you have any updates for us, though?
Um, so just quickly on the, in the powder mill corridor, we're still moving along, um, we have a meeting with Mast dot. And we're trying to coordinate, um, kind of the public forum that next step, so. Um, some of the forums are gonna be with, you know, members of, planning boards, individual planning boards, we're. Versus, you know, gathering with acting, we're still trying to kind of figure out how we're organizing that. Um, and then the stakeholder ones, which are like all of the neighbors, and then, um, kind of the bigger picture, so we're starting to. To parse those out and, um, hopefully those will be happening, um, in the next month or two, um. And, yeah, we are, you know, on track to, um, have our annual report. Um, it's coming along and our master plan and implementation, um, committee. Um, we had a new way of tracking items, so we did it through Google Form, um, I think it, as. You know. The, the, the main, um, group that uses the master plan. I think it will be really interesting for you to look at those answers, kind of how people are, are, are trying to implement in individual forums. Uh, so I will get all that information to you, uh, but just, you know, keep an eye out. We're looking for more people on the master plan implementation committee. So, because I know you guys have so much time on your hands, um, if you want to join.
Did, did you say we're the main committee, uh, the main group that, that does the master plan? Did I?
You are the main group that uses the master plan, I will say you guys refer to it more than, than anyone else.
That's, that's a win right there.
Although, uh, we're, we're starting to hear more of. Although we're starting to hear more of it on the select board. So, you know, it's good, good little wins. But that's it.
So we're, I'll just note that we're taking the lead on the master plan. This trap team. And that's on record.
Indeed, it is.
With with data, because Julie does data, so. She must have data to back that up.
I have a lot of data, yeah. A lot of question marks. There there's a lot of frustration around the goals. So Master Plan Implementation Committee will be reevaluating a lot of the goals, and I think that's a, it's a super interesting. Discussion. Like people just putting in like dot, dot, dot. I don't know what this means is is a is a common occurrence. So. If, you know, that's why I I joke, but it is really interesting and if any of you are, you know, maybe if you don't want to join the board, but you want to be. Updated in the conversation, let me know. And I can bring those obviously to the planning board when they become a bigger thing.
Any other? Updates from the from members of the board?
Can you tell us what's on the agenda next time?
On for next meeting? I. We will have at least, well, is that for next meeting or in two meetings? One moment, let me just look at. Our current board. So. Think those are. We have a. The Maynor Crossing is doing a preschool at the their. Building for a preschool. You don't need to approve the preschool, but you're gonna be approving a site plan modification. Because they're the new building R three A is for the preschool. So there. That will be coming up. I'm just not sure if that's next meeting or in two meetings.
So that's not a use permit? That's simply gonna be a site plan review?
Yeah, so it's it's considered, we we deemed it as a major modification. It is pretty major. I mean, they're changing parking and. They're adding some. Outdoor enclosures. For the children. I don't know what to call them. It sounds really weird, but outdoor play areas. And. So, yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna be coming to you with with that. We just received that permit. The the other item that, you know, we're we're waiting upon is. Adam Stack's two powder mill project. So Conservation has received a permit, and we're really hoping that. The planning permit gets in soon, so you guys can start reviewing that plan as well.
You said they received a permit. Did they grant a permit or received an application?
Sorry, received an application. Yeah, we're still, we're probably three months out before. Even grant, potentially granting anything, just because of the intensity of the environmental review that has to be done on that site. But other than that, Bill, I don't know what else. Bill Nemser has on the agenda. So. You might not have any public hearings.
I'm not aware of any other items. Okay, anyone else? All right, eight thirty-five. Jim, I'll entertain a motion to close.
I would be happy to. Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting of this evening.
Okay, I'll second it. All in favor by roll call. Annette? Bill Kuncher, not going last this time. Natalie? Jim?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. That's five zero to close the meeting. Thanks, everyone. I'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you.
Julia, are you still there?